All right. All right, thank you for joining us everyone tonight. I'd like to call to order the June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. My name is Kenneth Harris. I'm your Vice Chair and also the Representative for District Seven of the Prince George County Board of Education. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to take a moment to recognize my guest here, Mr. Kurt Miller, Associate Director and Mr. Maeve Sheath Assurance Partner, who are both from BDO LLC. Thank you for being here tonight, gentlemen, and sorry for messing your name up a little bit there. Ms. Ellis, can you call the role for me?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Present.
Dr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Murray. We have a call.
All right, jumping right into it. First, may I have a motion to adopt the June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, here ain't no disagreements. The agenda is adopted. Next, we'll move on to Section one point four, Approval of the June eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion to approve the June eighth, twenty, I assume, June eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Meeting Minutes?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you. I will second that motion to approve the minutes from June eighth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing no disagreement. The minutes are approved. Public comments tonight, we have no registered public comment speakers, so we'll move on to Section three point O. And for Section three point O today, our financial audit firm, BDO LLC. I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Sheath and Mr. Miller, who are joining us this evening to give us an entrance conference presentation for the upcoming financial audit. Gentlemen, I'd like to turn the floor over to you. Are you projecting your own slides? Or, Ms. Ellis, are you projecting the slides for them?
Well, I, I can, I can, Mr. Chair, I can certainly share. Just give me one second, I'll pull it up. I just want to make sure I don't use Zoom a lot, so.
Take your time. I'm more of a Teams guy myself.
Yeah, we use. But hopefully, everybody can see the presentation on their screen.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, perfect, awesome. So, thank you, thank you, everyone, for having BDO on the call to kind of talk about, a little bit about the required communications we have for the upcoming financial audit. As you might recall, some of the members might recall, we were engaged by the Board of Education last year to audit FY twenty-one financial statements. Those have, of course, been issued. So we are in a second year of our engagement with the school system. So we are excited to be back. We had a meeting with management a couple of weeks ago where we traced out all the required things that we need to do as part of the financial statements and have our entrance meeting with management. But here, as required by professional standards, we would like to talk few minutes with the, the, the committee that oversees the financial aspects of the school system. This report probably will be shared with Board of Education too, and at some point, I, I would probably reach out to everyone in the board and along with management also. So please feel free to interrupt me, ask me any questions as we go along. It's not a long presentation, but if there are any questions on the audit process, timeline, or anything like that, please let us know. So why are we doing this? As part of the professional standards, we are required as auditors to discuss certain matters with the committee as part of the financial statement audit process. So as the audit process goes along, we'll, we'll talk to you first, and then towards the end of the audit, or once it's close to issuance or after issuance, we'll report back to you on what transpired during the audit. So last year, if you remember, we had a presentation similar to that going over the results of the audit, any findings that we have during the audit. So that's required communications as part of the audit and kind of having an open line of communication with the committee and the auditors. Because although we work with management in to provide audit opinion and financial statement audit, we are engaged by the Board of Education and by the committee. So we report to the Board of Education and to this committee as part of our audit. So what are responsibilities of BDO under the audit? So there's a very big distinction. The financial statements are responsibilities of management. The preparation of the financial statements, making sure that the numbers in there are correct. What our responsibility is to form an opinion and express an opinion on those financial statements that, once we do our audit procedures, are the numbers materially misstated or not? So we don't audit each and every number that is on the financial systems or financial records of the school system. We do a sample selection based on our risk assessment, based on our scope of where we think the risk lies, and there are ways to come conclude on where the risk lies within the school system, which Kurt and I will talk a little bit, get into it a little bit later in the presentation. But the main responsibility here for BDO is to form an opinion and issue an opinion on the financial statements. Are the financial statements in accordance to the generally accepted accounting principles? Are there proper policies? Are there proper estimation process included in the financial statements, which basically, once all the numbers are put together, are they, in fact, materially misstated or not? So further detail of our responsibility and management responsibility is part of an engagement letter which management signed a couple of weeks ago. So there's more in-depth discussion about what responsibly lies with management and what our responsibilities in there. So in terms of the audit strategies, the overall audit strategy, like I said, is to ensure that the financial statements are free from material misstatements. So what you say material misstatement is, is are there fraud or errors in the financial statements? Fraud is very hard to identify in certain aspects. Errors easier to identify based on the audit processes that we do, right? So we, we do a lot of, a lot of testing that kind of hit the fraud aspect of it and the error aspect of it. It's the samplings of various account streams, understanding of internal controls that are happening throughout the audit, throughout the school system, what changes happened during the year compared to last year. Last year, we were still in midst of COVID, schools were still closed. This year, in FY twenty-two, all schools were open, so we would see more activity, more student fund activity, and those kinds of activity would have increased within the school year. So we take all of that knowledge from last year compared to this year. We bring in the knowledge from our expertise, the other schools that we audit, what's happening in the industry. Is, are there any new accounting pronouncements? And there, there is one that does impact very materially to the school system this year. Kurt will talk a little bit more about that. What does that do, the financial statements, the numbers that are in the financial statements? Are the controls there are in place, are they operating properly? One thing to clarify here is, we do understand the internal controls throughout the school system as part of our financial statements. There is, we don't audit those internal controls for reporting purposes, but if there are internal controls that do come, deficiencies that do come into light based on our testing or review of those controls, we'll report back to this committee and in the financial statements. We also look at the controls surrounding the ITGC, the, the Oracle system, the IT information that's flowing through various systems in compiling the financial statement. So we have a separate IT team that comes in to the school system, audits the controls around that, who has access control, which systems interact with other systems, who has, what are the possible protections around the systems? So all of that is taken into consideration to kind of come up with an opinion of, are the numbers, systems, and everything in check of during the year, right? Along with that, we have a responsibility because the school system gets federal funding in the expense federal dollars, we have to test under what's called uniform guidance. So we, as part of that, we pick certain programs, we test those at an in-depth level for compliance to make sure that the school system is, in fact, in compliance with various federal laws and regulation related to those programs. So last year, if you, if you remember, there were coronavirus funding that was pretty big in last year's school systems, federal awards. That should still continue in FY twenty-two, so I would see that those programs and those federal dollars under the coronavirus and the various virus, coronavirus fundings that received after that would impact the school in a material way. So overall, honing in on those risk areas, honing in on what changed from prior year, what external factors are impacting the audit, all those kind of combined to ensure that we are having a most efficient audit in order to make sure the risks that are out there are being addressed through our audit procedures. Next page is plan scope. I would, I would hand it over to Kurt to kind of talk a little bit about the plan scope and, and talk about a little bit about the gas bees that are coming up. Kurt?
Thank you, Mal. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of BDO. You know, as Mal did a nice job pointing out the responsibilities of, of BDO and, and the procedures related to the audit. Now, based on our initial assessment, our plan scope for this audit will be focused around some preliminary areas. As Mal mentioned, we'll look at fraud risk, we'll look at revenue recognition for material, your material revenue streams. We'll look at existence, completeness, and accuracy of your cash and investments to ensure that the liquid assets on your financial statements are, are complete and accurate. We'll look at any capital assets for existence and accuracy. We'll look at also your liabilities to ensure that they're accurate and complete. And we'll evaluate any related party transactions with any related parties in the school system. And then naturally, as Mal mentioned, we'll focus on the compliance with requirements related to your federal awards. So within our, our single audit that we performed on behalf of the school system, we will evaluate and test several major programs. We also plan to perform our audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards. These are the standards that will apply in conducting our audit. We will consider the system, as Mal said, the school system's internal controls over financial reporting. But we will not express an opinion on the internal controls. We will perform tests to compliance over laws and regulations related to the school system. We'll also plan and perform the audit over the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and in accordance with uniform guidance, as Mal pointed out. And also, we'll consider internal controls over compliance as they relate with requirements that could have a direct and material effect on the major programs, as mentioned. Next slide, Mal.
Sure. One, one thing I would like to add is, we're still going through our planning process, so there could be areas that are not mentioned here that could be added. One that I think we'll, Kurt, talk about it, would be the new accounting standard, the lease standard that's coming up, so that, that would definitely be reviewed and make sure that what management has done to implement those standards. But there could be other ones related to coronavirus or any updates to any other part of the financial statements that we might not have encountered yet because we're still in the planning phases of, of the audit yet, so.
The next item is very important, is we do take independence very serious, the BDO. We do evaluate each person and ensure that at all times, our independence is upheld as we audit the school system. Next slide. Now, next, as Mal mentioned a couple of times, the school system will be implementing a couple of new accounting standards in the current fiscal year. Next slide. The one, may one, as Mal may reference to, is leases. The school system has entered into several leases through general operations, and in this, under the audit this year, we'll spend a number, a good bit of time looking at the implementation of this lease standard. Basically, this lease standard takes the leases and puts them on your statement of financial position or balance sheet, and basically, you'll record, recognize a right-to-use asset and corresponding liability for, for the present value of the lease related to the system as a whole. So management right now is taking inventory of all leases throughout the school system, and we'll, we'll audit that inventory, and also they'll record the fair value of those leases, and then we'll test the fair value of the implementation and the presentation through on your financial statements. And then the final one, which will be implemented next year, is public-private and public-public partnerships and the available payment arrangements. So it's important from ten to ten, the school system will enter into contracts with operators that basically conveys the right to operate or use a non-financial asset such as infrastructure or capital asset for a period in exchange for or like, like exchange itself. Also, there's availability payments or arrangements also with operators where basically will be payments made for the design, construction, and financing maintenance under the new standard. So this standard will be adopted. Management team will be working on it this year and implementing it either early or at the latest next year in accordance with the standard as it's written. So with that, that's a general overview of our audit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Mal, do you want to add anything in closing?
Sure, absolutely. So in overall timeline, like I said, we, we just started a couple of weeks ago into the planning phase, so we hoping to continue that for a week or so, and then we'll come back in August for the final fieldwork or the financial statement reporting with the expectation of issuing the report November, I'm sorry, September thirtieth. And then right after that, we'll go into single audit, which would be released probably end of October. So that's the general timeline we have, which was discussed with management in ensuring that the reporting does go out on time, on a timely basis also. So with that, that's kind of a general overview of the planning, started planning that we have put into place for the fiscal year FY twenty-two. We would, we'd like to have, if there are any questions, we'd like to address it at this point of time, but from our end, this is our presentation.
All right, gentlemen. Well, thank you so much for that very comprehensive presentation. I will open the floor up for questions from my colleagues. I'll kick it off while they might be thinking about questions, just because, Dr. She, I mean, Mr. She, I need you to repeat the last thing you said for me. In terms of the planning phase, you said you'll be in there for an additional week. Then you said we circle around and meet in August, then you issue a report September thirtieth, and single audit was when? What was the date on that?
October thirtieth, October thirtieth.
October thirtieth. And what does the mechanism look like for the meeting in August? Is that returning to this committee? Is that, you know, an email with a report saying, hey, this is the plan that we anticipate to execute, or what does that kind of look like?
So now, I think that was more so meeting back with the management, with management to start the final fieldwork. I think at the committee level, I believe last year, we met closer to issuance or after the issuance of the financial statement. So that would be sometime in, I'm guessing, in October, November timeframe, we would need the committee back to report on the audit results.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I think you answered my other question already, but, oh, within the audit strategy, you mentioned utilizing historical data from formal reports. Is that specifically a report that your LLC did last year, or is that a combination of that data as well as, you know, audits that we have performed internally as well? What does that historical data look like?
Correct. So it, it's both. There, it's internal audit reports that Michelle, Ms. Winston and her team produces. We look at those report, we get those report to see. We do get the hotline report also to see what kind of frauds or calls, whistleblowers calls happen during, during the year to incorporate some of those procedures or some of those areas that might have come up on a regular basis on the call to kind of deep dive further in there. So it's a combination of our last year report. It could be historical reports too, where it'd be not looking at twenty-one, but kind of having a trend line of from maybe FY eighteen, nineteen, twenty, one to twenty-two, but also the internal reports coming from Ms. Winston's group and management internally that produces some of the various reports.
Okay. So thank you. That's all the questions I had. Colleagues, floor is still open for questions if anyone has questions.
So I'm not sure if this is a question for the presenters or really for within our committee, but I was interested in finding out more about, you mentioned the leases. Are these, are we leasing properties, or is this operating equipment? What is it that we're measuring?
So, so leases would encompass all that's mentioned. There are currently operating leases that are one year or greater within the school system. So it could be for the equipment, it could be for real estate, it could be for any number of things. But they're just operating leases that you've recognized currently. And, and so they now will be reflected on your balance sheet as a right-to-use asset and a corresponding liability.
So just to clarify, we have not seen the listing or inventory of all the leases yet. Management is working through that, so I guess, I don't know if somebody from management is here, but that, that listing of inventory and that adoption of that eighty-seven is, it's coming shortly. So maybe sometime in July, that inventory is done, and how that's going to impact the financial statements. I believe management is working with outside consultant. I could be wrong there, but that's, that's the, that's the goal there, is to kind of implement all of that and bring us the final product to see if the implementation is correct or not. As part of the audit, we'll review that.
I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Dr. Miller. One, one second. Board member Madeline, will you, will you finish?
No, I had one more question in terms of the partnerships. I was just curious about the process of how we conduct audits on those. I think you mentioned when we, the way I thought about it, was in-kind services where we get a service for in exchange for something else. I was wondering if you could clarify that a little bit more. You talked about that right after the leases.
Oh, the public-private partnership?
Yes.
Good.
So, so basically, in a public-private partnership, there, you know, basically, we're looking for exchange-type transactions, so there could be any number of types of transactions that will be put forward within the standard. So there's a lot of guardrails within the standard, but basically, it's where you would put up an asset or infrastructure or something that's property of the school system to an operator, and then the operator would then perform some service thereof. So, so it's, it's exchange or like exchange is what that means, is it could be cash being exchanged, or it could be services exchanged in, in exchange for a piece of property or something like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Miller?
I'd just like for them to clarify for me what is under the strategy, when you talked about audit strategy, is to assess the risk of material misstatement of audit procedures. Would you elaborate on that for me, please?
Correct. To Dr. Miller, as part of the audit, the goal is to identify if there are material misstatements to the financial statements. So the, the opinion, if you look at our opinion, it basically says that as long as the financial statements are free from material misstatements, so there could be misstatements that are not material. If you, depends on what we conclude and what part of the overall strategy of what material could be. So it could be qualitatively immaterial, qualitatively material. So, for example, a five-dollar misstatement is not going to render a financial statement in, this material, right? But a same five-dollar, if utilized to meet the covenants, and because of that misstatement of five dollars, the covenants are now not met, becomes a material issue, right, to the financial statement. So it, it is not a plain dollar number that comes up in the financial statement, but how that dollar amount impacts the financial statement. So that's what it means in the sense of misstatement of, of material misstatement. I, I don't know if that cleared your question, or?
It clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Great. Was that your only question, Dr. Miller?
No, I'm through. He asked my question.
Okay, yeah, so let's throw your hand up, just making sure. Okay, so thank, thank you again, Mr. Sheath and Mr. Miller. This is, again, been a very comprehensive presentation. We look forward to engaging with you further as you get through your process and begin to, begin to get to work. So I'll move right along here to Section three point two, Budget Moments, so the FY twenty-three Operating Budget Discussion. And today, we will have Ms. Lisa Howe will be leading the discussion instead of our CFO, Michael Hurst. I'll turn the floor over to you, Ms. Howe.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harris. Appreciate it. So just a brief update from our meeting last week, actually. Not too much has changed in the last week. As we discussed, then, the county council has adopted its budget on June first of last week, and then we also, on June first, which was a couple of weeks ago. We did receive an updated allocation projection from MSD on June seventh, and we're anticipating the final projections by the end of this week from MSD. However, we're not expecting there to be any material changes from what we have already received, so we think we're pretty close with what the final numbers are going to be. So we are working through, working our way through a relatively small budget reconciliation exercise. There's a really minimal gap between the revenues and expenditures, which is, which is a good thing. However, we are working through updating and revalidating some of our budget assumptions, particularly around the realignment of our restricted funds based on updated grant applications that have since come through. We want to ensure that our planned expenditures are captured in the right object and the right category. We want to make sure that we're including any new grants that were received in two thousand and twenty-two, particularly some that have come in within the last month. That will carry over into twenty-three, so we want to update our assumptions for that. Those changes on the restricted side won't have any impact to the total budget, it's just sort of realigning, making the proper realignment to ensure everything's in the right bucket. And then we're also refining our budget assumptions around the settled agreement for local twenty-two fifty to ensure that what we now have in the budget reflects what has been tentatively agreed to that we've been working on for the last several months through that negotiation process. That agreement is expected to go to the board at the meeting next week on June twenty-third, along with the recently reopened agreements for SEIU and ASASP. So just wanting to refine the assumptions now in the budget based off of those tentatively agreed upon contracts. For PGCE, we are at an impasse on the negotiations for that new contract, but we are going to, you know, continue to move forward with the assumptions that we have for the others just mentioned. So we're looking forward to the board meeting next week and, you know, in anticipation of hopefully the budget being approved. So that's, that is the update on where we are. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Howe. Yeah, Dr. Millie, first?
You're on mute? You're on mute, Dr. Miller?
Thank you. Since PGCE, is that an impasse? Who mediates that for us? Who will be the media, who will, yeah, be the independent party to mediate that?
That's a great question. I'm not close to those details. That's something that Mr. Burnett would be in the, in the best position to address. He's the lead negotiator for the school system. But I'm not sure who the mediator is for that process.
But this is an independent party mediating, am I correct?
I'm not close enough to the details, I would assume so, but I can't speak to that specifically. I can certainly find out and provide you with an answer for that.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it. Thank you, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and Ms. How, one question from me. Can you remind me and the public of the updated deficit? I know it shrunk a little from our initial meeting, not, not meeting last week, but one before, to our current projections now. Okay, so can you remind me of that number, please?
Yeah, right now we're within just a few hundred thousand between the revenue and the expenditures based off of the refined number that we received from the state. So it's a pretty small gap that we know we're going to be able to, to close out. So we're kind of working through that process now.
Okay, because I know we were projecting close to a million at first and I know that deficit shrunk a little bit. So that's, that's good news. But there's an even smaller gap now. And in terms of the reconciliation process, I know you gave us that nice timeline at the beginning. But in terms of next steps, what's the next milestone that we're going after? I guess it's reconciliation, but when does that end with the deadline for that?
Well, for us, we need to have it finished before the board meeting on June 23rd. So we would go to that meeting prepared for that overview and having everything reconciled at that point. And then if the budget is approved by the board, we then have to kind of just go back and see what that looks like categorically compared to what the county has approved. Sometimes there might be slight adjustments within categories. The totals won't change, but sometimes there might be little shifts between the categories. So for us, once we get through the meeting next week on the 23rd, assuming it gets approved, we do have to go through a budget certification process with the state. That's due on, I think, June 25th. And then we have to go back to the county as well to just make sure that any differences in categories are realigned and ultimately approved by them also. So that is kind of where we are. Obviously for us, we need to make sure the budget is loaded by the beginning, by, you know, July 1st. So there's not much time between the budget getting approved and us getting the budget loaded. So then the school system can begin executing on the approved budget.
Yeah, these are some really quick turnaround times for you. So thank you for that update. Any other questions, colleagues? I see your hand up, Dr. Miller, that's, that's from the last time.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. All right, thank you, Ms. How, for that, for that update. Jumping right over to you, Dr. Coleman, to give us an update for CIP summer projects.
Thank you so much, Committee Chair Harris. Capital Programs has finalized the list of summer renovation projects. And this information has been shared with the board office. It's been broken down by district to make it easy to see where the work's being completed. Of note, it is a short summer this year. So capital programs and building services plan to begin working directly after teachers and staff leave on June 24th for summer break. The first day back for teachers is August 16th. So we have less than eight weeks to complete our work. The goal is to complete all summer renovations in a timely manner and to not impact the opening of schools on Monday, August 29th. Some of the renovation projects are larger and to manage their size, the renovations are being phased, which means they are being completed in pieces over an extended period of time. These larger projects are either a continuation from an earlier timeframe that we had to work on them or they may be started this summer and continued beyond the summer into a later date. In addition to these large, larger phased projects, we'll also be working through smaller projects. For example, AC upgrades, air conditioning upgrades, parking lot paving, playground upgrades, painting, et cetera. So we're excited to get to work in an effort to provide the best facilities possible for all students and staff. Any questions?
Definitely, thank you for the update. I know this is a quick, again, quick turnaround, eight weeks to get all that done. Dr. Miller, see your hand up.
Oh, I thought you were going to ask a question first. Well, I, I was getting ready to comment on the eight weeks to complete also. Dr. Coleman, you mentioned large and small or those like, let's say you can get through the, getting the AC in and maybe the parking lots. What are the large issues that, or projects that may, that may, hopefully not, that you may not be able to meet in this eight-week timeline that may interfere with the reopening of, or when school reopens, I won't say interfere, but it will be incomplete prior to that.
Chair Miller, I, I really appreciate that question. One of the areas that I didn't want to touch on, but we need to talk about it, our supply chain issues. And so there are, it is, there's a level of, of uncertainty right now that is touching our entire economy. And that unfortunately also impacts our renovation schedule. So as much as possible, we have tried to preorder materials through the contractors who are completing the work so that we can anticipate delivery of the materials needed to complete projects in a timely manner. But to be quite honest, whenever you're going in and completing renovation work, there's al- always the chance of unforeseen impacting projects. So whether it be large or small, there is a small chance that unforeseen issues can impact the ability for us to complete the project in a timely manner. But we're monitoring each project closely with project managers. And we're going to be certain to communicate out any unforeseen that may impact projects so that we can plan accordingly and, and minimize any impact on instruction in the fall.
Thank you, I just wanted it to go on record. And then this may be asked again in the board meeting because that is a possibility. And this is an ambitious, as I see it, goal for you for the timeline. So, and I, I remember last, I think it was at our last meeting, I had a similar question in reference to what's going on at Sootland High School. So, and that's, that's, that's construction, true, but renovations, that's considered construction as well. So I just wanted to go on record that, you know, you all have a plan, but we have to understand the dynamics that can be hindrances to you completing your, the projects at the, within the timeframe you have projected.
Absolutely, and that's why I appreciate that question, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Dr. Miller. See, Dr. Coleman, I definitely acknowledge that anything can happen when it comes to planning projects, no matter how big or small. You always have to assume that things are going to shift to the right rate. So, you know, thank you for giving us that update. Will, will this committee or the board in general be kept abreast of the situation as you all start developing, not, you know, week by week, but just generic updates to say, hey, you know, we project that this will be done, we don't project this will be done. Can we expect to see updates like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we'll, what we plan to do, because Dr. Goldson has made it clear that she wants these projects completed on time. And so we will be providing her with regular updates around the progress on these projects. And if there are any unforeseen that impact the ability to complete them or if we, we suspect that we will not be able to complete them in a timely manner, then those updates will be provided to her in a timely manner so the board can be kept informed.
Very good, thank you, sir. Any other questions, colleagues, before I let Mr. Coleman go? Let me Dr. Coleman go. All right, I think we're all squared away. And all right, colleagues, so we've actually come to the end of the meeting. We're at 4.0 with your next steps. I'd like to take this time to direct the public and those that plan to attend to the PGCPS Capital Programs EFMP Public Forum. The, I'm just read this brief description that FY 2022 Educational Facilities Master Plan EFMP is an amendment to be approved FY 2022 EFMP, which is guided by the FY 2017 EFMP, along with the 2020 Local ESS Consolidation Strategic Plan and Comprehensive Maintenance Plan EF. The EFMP has been used to prioritize major projects cited in the annual six-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2022 through 2028. The 20-year master plan reintroduces the prioritization schedule for more than 133 facility projects phased into three-year cycles, I'm sorry, three cycles of CIP projects. So we'll be having the actual EFMP Public Forum immediately following this meeting at 6:00 PM tonight. And the link is up on the PGCPS website where you can find upcoming meetings. Just go down there, click on it, you'll get right into the meeting for those that would like to attend. So thank you to this committee, committee for meeting tonight. We, we got some good updates from audit folks that were helping us with auditing, got a, got a good update when it comes to finance as well as what we're doing with our CIP summer plan. So thank you everyone for attending tonight. I would like to call for, unless anyone else has anything else for the meeting. Okay, seeing nothing, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, seeing opposition. I appreciate all of you for being here tonight, meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
See you.
Bye-bye.